Okay, we're recording, we're live.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome to the board work session and executive session tonight. Today is Monday, February 22nd, 2021. I would like to call this meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, could you please do the whole call?
Trustee Garien Swastika.
So, welcome to the board.
Trustee Andrew Butler.
Here.
Trustee Mambo Bodina.
Here.
Vice Chairman Travis Manning.
Here.
Madam Chair, my cell Christina.
Here.
May I thank you if you'd like to all please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will be seated. Okay, so Madam Clerk, could you please read the board meeting agenda postings?
Madam Chair, Christina and trustees, I request the approval of the board of trustees' board work session and executive session agenda, posted for Monday, February 22nd, 2021. The original agenda was posted on Friday, February 19th, 2021, at 3:13 PM. The agenda was posted at the school district, on the school district website and at the Caldwell District office.
Thank you. And I would like to ask at this time for a motion to receive the agenda post, posting report.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve and accept the agenda posted for February 22nd, 2021.
Second, all right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hey, you're in on, I'd like to ask for vote. Always in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries. All right, and so today on our board work session agenda, the first thing that we have is the community schools update. So, Dr. French.
Thank you, Madam Chair and trustees. We have Hortensia is here with us, who is our community school liaison, and we ask her to provide an update of what is happening with community schools, and then I'll follow up after her. We can visit about future of community schools and what we see happening in the Caldwell School District as we move forward. So I'll turn it to Hortensia.
Hello, everyone. I, it's so nice actually that there's a virtual option for me to still be there. I, so I don't get to miss out on this opportunity to share with you all about what is happening and kind of what I see as a vision for our community school expansion, the Caldwell School District. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, perfect. Okay, so I am going to share my screen with a.
You wait just one moment, let's, yeah, just one moment.
Okay, so she's ready to change her her screen now?
Yes, go ahead and share your screen.
Okay. Okay, let me make sure I can do this. All right, and so you can see my, my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, so this is, I will share disclaimer, this is kind of based on the knowledge and the amount of expertise I've accumulated over now almost four years of really investing into the community school strategy. So this is the vision of community schools in the Caldwell School District, and I'll share also a little bit about how our community school strategy has supported our families, especially during the pandemic. And so I think it's important for us to recognize the why behind, why, why really expand the community school strategy within the Caldwell School District? And for, well, for one, the community school strategy is a driver of equity, and so that really means removing the barriers to, to our family and our student success. So, really, I, knowing that, you know, for some, for all our families, the amount of opportunities or accessibility will differentiate and be different, and so it's really being able to remove those barriers. And the community school strategy is a systems change. So when we look at this, we really have tried to do things at Sacagawea in the past four years on a best practice model, based off of data, based off of the national recommendations from the Coalition for community schools. And so when we look at systems changes within the, within the school building and within its environment, we look at how community schools' strategy affects mobility, how it affects the mental behavioral health of our kids and their families. So it's really looking at those two things of equity and systems change. And I think reminding ourselves, and especially I think Mr. Webster and I have done a pretty good job of, of really reminding ourselves that we're, we're the connectors versus the providers. Well, for one, Caldwell and the Treasure Valley is filled with so many resources and individuals and organizations that are always willing to say yes, and are always willing to come to the table to really rethink the way that they serve families, or just to talk about new ideas of how, is there a different way we can do this? Or what's missing? Where can we fill in the gap? And so we recognize that there are so many experts out there in so many different fields that our biggest role in this is being the expert in connecting and building relationships. So, as the team of the school administration knows, five years ago, when the strategy, when, when this all started, there were certain qualifiers of how Sacagawea was identified. And now I think with knowing, and that's really one of the advantages of, of doing this now for so long, is we're not really going into this, like, what does this look like? Especially since the strategy was so new back in the day, we really had no idea of, of what this was going to look like, what, what we were wanting it to do for the Caldwell families. But now that we have this wealth of knowledge, we can really identify, you know, the next schools with these qualifiers. So first of all, it's that school buy-in. Mr. Webster and I, we meet every week. I have built relationships and have really fostered and nurtured those with our staff, with our community, with our parents, and have really bought in and have really made this community school strategy a part of the school culture. The second thing that we could look at would be a needs assessment. Each individual school in the Caldwell School District will have individual needs that, that, that are, that will differentiate between school. And so we really need to know what those needs are, what their fires are, how can, and what those would look like, and how the community school strategy could impact and address those needs. And secondly, we could look at a resource map. Chris Stanley through Caldwell Health Needs Assessment, years when this all first started, divided out Caldwell within census tracts that really dug into food deserts, that dug into what the earnings were based off of, from one census tract to the other, what health factors impacted one population versus other. So when we look at this resource map, but also looking at what resources does a school already have, how can we build off of those? And then what resources around the school exists and what's missing? And so based off of, off of these qualifiers, and, and of course others, and, and, but I think really based off of these, these three qualifiers, we could look into next steps. And so again, disclaimer, this is just based on the information that I know and kind of how I could see this fold out. Potential next schools. And so for me, my dream, if I was in charge of the world, it would be every school in the Caldwell School District would be a community school. Because I truly believe that every kiddo in every phase of their educational journey needs that whole child approach in supporting their educational journey and supporting their family throughout this, throughout these stages. As a Caldwell School District, Caldwell School District parent personally, I know how important preschool is because my son did two years, and I've seen the impact that's having in, in his first year in kindergarten during the pandemic. And so we know that from the very get-go, I hope that he and his peers have that support until they get into, you know, high school and beyond. But looking at those qualifiers and thinking realistically, what could this look like? I could say possibly Sacagawea feeds into Serena, so that's already feeding into one of the middle schools. So we could look into Wilson. Wilson can be a next target school where one, half of its population, half, half of Farmway students go to Wilson, where we could look into co-locating services or doing programming at Farmway versus Wilson. So therefore, we could also target Lewis and the, the other half of Farmway students that go to Lewis and Clark. There has been, I have been able, through my job, to be able to build relationships with other staff in other schools. So knowing that there are staff members at Wilson that, that have said, you know, how do we make this happen here, or where can we find one of you? You know, knowing that there's that staff buy-in, or, you know, that, that conversation has started. And secondly, Will, you know, and lastly, Wilson feeds into Jefferson. One of the things that we hope to one, be able to explore is that opportunity of, of really gathering data around our fifth graders, sharing that with our middle school. And so that way they're better prepared to handle some of our, you know, some of that social emotional, you know, luggage that these kiddos take to that next tier in their education. And then lastly, Canyon Springs would be a great fit, because they have so many caring adults in their building, they're doing so much of this work that for them, having some, an individual really focus in on the work, could one allow the individuals that are doing this work really focus on their job and kind of real, take off some of those stressors and some of that workload. One of the biggest things that I have tried to do in my job is to not add additional things to Mr. Webster's plate, but to actually remove things from his plate. So he can really just, you know, he can really do what he needs to do. And so I think with Canyon Springs and the fact that they already going in this direction, they would be a great fit for a community school strategy. And so these, this is, you know, and we can look at this based off of, if you see on the map, you know, Sacagawea is at the, the most northern school, Lewis and Clark's, you know, down at the south, and, and we could approach it that way, but these are just some kind of, based on what I've seen, and, you know, the amount of data around this and the level, you know, just kind of what direction we could, we could possibly go. Realistically, I think it'd be cool, I mean, I don't know realistically, but I think it would be pretty neat if we could have, you know, community, community school in every elementary school, and then build into a middle school. And, and the cool thing about Canyon Springs, and, you know, now that we're building off of this, is that we no longer, there's templates already put into place for this. We don't have to build, build, build the boat or build whatever, you know, as we go, there's already been a template put in place, so we can just adapt it to the very specific needs of each school. So with that in mind, I'll switch over a little bit to how did our community school support our families during the pandemic? And just a quick reminder, this, these five priorities are what we really try to focus at our community school work at SAC. And so, one of the things is, we have been a summer lifeline to our lot, a lot of our families, even before the pandemic. I get to work throughout the summer, which I find it to be actually a pretty cool privilege, where these relationships that I have built through the community school strategy allow for families to know exactly who they can reach out to, to, one, simply get questions answered, but to be able to be directed, or what we have established as a soft handoff. Most times when you refer, or when you tell a family about a resource, or you're trying to get them connected to, to a dental provider, sometimes it's, there's so many little barriers in between all that, that what's missing, is just a connection from one contact that they trust to another contact that, that, that trusting person is sending them to. And because of, because of the strategy, that not only does it, you know, is, sometimes leads programs or initiatives, but really comes in and supports, we were able to support our STEM camp that we did this summer. We were able to continue doing a book and a buy-in in a safe manner, where a partner said, we still want to help, how can we do this safely? And so we were still be, we were still able to do all these things, because we had a system in place where our families really trusted us and knew exactly where they could go to get this information and this help. One thing that we have really flourished on was our Canyon Hill support, and I mean that directly with regards to our faith groups that we have on the hill. They have been continuous handraisers in every aspect of our community school strategy work. But one of the things that has really turned over in regards to the direct impact on families was their willingness to listen to what our families' needs are. And especially when we're going, when we started remote, and we were going to yellow to that hybrid model, we knew that families were going to have to figure out that childcare component, that, you know, just those three hours before they came to school, or those three hours after school, and one of the churches on the hill met with us almost weekly to kind of figure out, how can we put together childcare just specifically for those families, for those three hours? And even though it wasn't something we could pull off, it was still their willingness to come around and still figure out, by donating over 500 face masks to our staff, that still to this day will come in and grab whatever face mask they need for that kiddo that sometimes forgets it every day, or for their class, just to make sure that they have extras. And so, you know, we've had, later on, I'll share a different way, one of our faith groups has supported us, but our families have this entire village that really comes, wraps around them and supports them, and they're willing to adapt the way that they serve families to meet the needs of our families. I'm sure you guys have, you know, you, you're up to date with the hotspots, but the hotspot story for us is, is a little bit unique. And so, because of the community school strategy, and because we knew we were coming into red, it was a conversation Mr. Webster and I were having, I mean, I think July, like, what are we going to do? How are we going to support our families with internet? And so, we knew at that time, August, that we didn't have an answer, but I became an expert in service providers and who had these deals and how to apply, or where to call, we tried to figure out the fastest number to get directly to customer service. And so throughout these months, and so actually now, January, we're able to provide 20 hotspots. But it's what happened in those five months before January 1st, and that was really identifying what families needed this. We went through a checklist of getting them information about internet providers, helping them apply for the strong family, strong students grants, letting them know of the wifi options that they had through the district, through the city. And then, once January 1st came, and what happened was, we built this relationship with T-Mobile and Evergreen Heights Menonite Church as, as our, the face of our, of our hotspot, was we knew that removing this one barrier was going to alleviate so many struggles for so many families. And I am pretty happy to say that, so these, these about 20-ish kids that are off of our hotspots, close to 90% of them have improved their attendance. And for some of these kids, there was, there had been absolutely no learning during remote, because this was their one barrier. And as soon as we were able to connect them, and we built this system that allowed for them to connect, they haven't missed a day, or they're really trying their hardest to catch up. And so, and because I have this position of being able to focus in on these 20 kids, I check in weekly with their teachers to make sure that they're logging in. We did add a stipulation for very, very few students of, you know, making sure that they, you know, we added an attendance stipulation, but the point is to really kind of push them to getting their work done, to, you know, doing their best with the time that they've had, because we know that even though it was just wifi, it was a much, much bigger issue than, than, than just that. We did, so we did a community resource event just a couple of weekends ago, and what this really taught us was, one, our families really missed this. We, it was, we had to go through a list of things to make sure that it was COVID appropriate, and it was, it was a lot of work, but we were able to successfully give out close to 40 bikes. We still gave out flu shots even at the tail end of, of, of the season. We gave out over 55 food boxes to families, and what they told us is, they are more willing to come to the school once a month to pick up their food than they are to go elsewhere. But there's a, there has to be a reason why. We have less families accessing flu shots at SAC than, than elsewhere, and it's probably because flu shots are, you can get it at the pharmacy, you can get it at Walgreens, you can get it at Albertson's, it's really everywhere. But even just knowing that there's a lot of food banks in Caldwell, there's still something missing there. And so that's where our community school strategy jumps in and says, how can we fill this gap? Because, yeah, our partners say we can come out here once a month, but there's still someone out there already doing the job, and how can we connect our families to those partners out in, in our community? And lastly, I just, I have to say, none of this work could be done, again, without our stakeholders. And what COVID has proved is their buy-in to the community school strategy and to the Caldwell, and to the families at Sacagawea and the staff at Sacagawea, because they continue to meet with me virtually even, and, and are willing to raise their hand and help, and help in whatever way, shape, or form that they can. Thank you so much. I hope I didn't take too much, but I'm answering my screen, and I will, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Hortensia. We appreciate your presentation. Trustees, do you have any questions for Mrs. Hernandez?
So then, would a community school model be expanded anytime soon?
Madam Chair and trustee Swastika, I, Hortensia let me, I will help answer that. So, we asked Hortensia to prepare a vision of what it should be, because we've seen the benefits of it during COVID, or during the pandemic for Sacagawea, and how people, how the families of Sacagawea have felt supported along the way, that have needed those resources. So we met with Hortensia. We do want Hortensia to continue the work of community schools. United Way is not able to continue it through their funding mechanism. So we anticipate that Hortensia will become a Caldwell School District employee here very shortly. That's our goal. I just want to make sure she knows that. Like, no, we have met with her. But when we did meet with her, we'd like, we're like, how can, what can this look like? And maybe, maybe it will take us a few years to grow, but Hortensia has been thinking about this, I would guess, for the last several years, as other schools have reached out to her, PTOs have wanted to know how to get that help and the resource. So I feel that as soon as Hortensia becomes a CSD employee, you know, that, that focus will be on Caldwell School District. I feel, from the school board and trustees, you may have to pull me aside, I just feel their support for community schools from the trust, the trustees. And I think you see the benefit of that for the students that have been served in Sacagawea. So, we want to put together a futuristic look of what it might be. Financially, it is, you know, that's something where the board, as we work on that budget, April may ask you, what is your, what's your priority? And we're going to prioritize a position for Hortensia, so that we have her, you know, continuing the work in Caldwell. But we do see it going forward. I don't know if that answers your question, trustee Swastika, but we're just very grateful for this work, and we're grateful for United Way, for the work that they have done to bring it to Caldwell, and to introduce this all to something. A parent told me, she, she wonders why, why this is novel. She feels like schools should be, they are the center of the community. So I thought that was an interesting take on it. Thanks, Hortensia.
Thank you.
And from my perspective, because I, I remember going to, with Hortensia to Utah, when United Way sent us to look at some different community schools in, in the Utah area, Salt Lake, in South Salt Lake area. And we were really impressed at how they have, how they have, their communities have benefited from this. And I know that on the plane ride back, Hortensia was, I felt she was kind of giving like, okay, we're going to start doing something, we gotta, and she was just starting the wheels turning, and, and so now we're here, and I'm, I'm, I'm impressed and I'm amazed that the community around Sacagawea has come in to help with the garden, the summer garden that you have, that you have going on, and all these other, you know, the childcare, and with the hotspots and everything. And I think it's great that, I, I feel that, you know, we, we have our stakeholders, we have a lot of folks that will help, and, and it does, you don't have to be a big corporation to help. I mean, that would be great, because we'll accept your dollars or whatever, but, you know, even people around the community that can just give a little bit, will help make our, our community school model that much better. So I, I just want to express how grateful I am for those people.
Any other comments, trustees? Questions?
So thank you, Hortensia, for all the work. It, it is hard work, but you have that passion and drive that's impressive. So thank you so much.
No, thank you. It started at the Y.
I think it started in Parma. Thank you, Mr. Webster.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, have a question?
Yes.
So I'm thinking about community schools' model and all the benefits it brings, and I'm thinking about some of the unknowns in our, in our immediate future, you know, with school enrollments kind of fluctuating for several different reasons. I guess, I suppose mainly because of COVID, also because of influx of some other schools in the area. And so just thinking about, about budgets and you know, it's sort of time, maybe this, maybe this is, this is pertinent to this. But I guess there, there are some unknowns out there, and we could, you know, we don't know as far as the full-time employees, the FTEs that we have for this coming year, exactly what that's going to look like. And so I guess, as a board, as a board, Dr. French is saying, you know, we need to think about this. We have talked about this in years past and months past. Just trying to think about the immediate future, and then also the long-term future as it relates to our budget and our priorities. And so I guess that's something we need to think about. But as far as our projected, I guess, Dr. French, my question is, so if Hortensia is, becomes a full-time employee of the Caldwell School District, how, how, how do you anticipate that the community schools program might grow, and how would that affect our budget in the future?
Sure. Madam Chair and Vice Chairman, even so to speak, we have to have a vision, and it may take us, like, you may have a vision board of what we would love to see happening, and it may take us longer than a year, may take up to five years. But we need to, the vision that Hortensia has shared with us is like, we would like to see it grow. We have federal dollars that are not tied to, you know, a teacher salary or anything like that. So there's some federal funds that we can use to bring Hortensia on. And we also know that there is a staff at Canyon Springs doing this work. So we want to provide support for them to continue the work, and then maybe someday we'll be able to have another individual like Hortensia supporting them. But they are doing the work. They, and they come to Hortensia and rely, they talk, visit with her, she's a great resource. You know, so we, I can't say that, you know, it might be a while, it could be three to five years before we see it to the level that Hortensia has brought to Sacagawea, but we can still continue the work, and we can still outreach out to the counselors at the schools. And how, I mean, Hortensia has made these connections in our, in our community, and she can share that. And, and eventually, will we, at a point where we can make, we can grow it. I believe we can.
And also, the really important word is the connector. And when you have someone that, primary responsibility is to connect families to resources in the schools, that's naturally, I mean, we don't have evidence of this probably yet, but naturally it's going to bring students into where those trustworthy resources or connectors are. So it's going to increase our enrollment, I believe.
Yeah, I, I see, I agree with you, trustee Swastika. I think it's a bonus. And we asked Paul, I don't know if it was a year, two years ago, just like, has it improved attendance? Have you seen, and Paul has pretty good attendance here at Sacagawea. So you're like, how is this, has it, have you seen a better family engagement? But what I think you've seen is families who weren't engaged engaging. You know, the trust, building that trust, which takes time.
It's improved attendance for kids we've worked for. It has taken hard work to improve attendance for some of those kids. And so the question is whether we want to invest, and I personally do.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's, we were talking, it was on, lately, we've heard a lot about return on investment. Preschool is a great return on investment, and sometimes we want to ensure our legislators understand this is a great return on investment. For this small amount of funding, we are going to get this return. And we might not see that return until that individual goes on to middle school or goes on, graduates from high school, but there is a return on investment, and I really believe that with community schools. It's, it's just not necessarily in a dollar amount, right? It's in a person's wellbeing.
What about trustee Butler? You, your children come.
One more, trustee Butler, you, your children come to the school.
I do. They do. So, so yeah, I get to see firsthand what Mr. Webster and Hortensia do. And it's fantastic to see the, the excitement and the communication, you know, there's, there's that saying, if you can't over-communicate. And the amount of things that the, the school puts out, notices and emails and, and everything about all of the activities and, and everything that happened around here. It, it's overwhelming, but it's great to see. Because every, every one of those is, is an opportunity for somebody to take advantage of that. And so, you know, if it's helping any of our kids, then, then it's a great thing to be doing. So, so I thank you both for, for doing this and, and yeah, it's a great, a great resource for everybody to have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Aunt Cynthia. We appreciate your presentation.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for the time and I, I just love what I do. And so I am fully committed to being able to do the best job I can and, and to really share the wealth of knowledge.
Thank you. And I probably shouldn't have, and thank you, Mr. Webster, for your, for your presentation as well. And I probably should have said in the very beginning that we were, we wanted to welcome everybody to Sacagawea. We are at Sacagawea Elementary. We're up on the hill. And so this is where we're having our, we're guests of, of Mr. Webster here at Sacagawea and this is where we're holding our meeting tonight. So if it looks a little bit different, it is. Don't adjust your TV. It is different. We're in the library, the media room for Sacagawea. So I, I forgot to say that in the very beginning. And so if there is, this was just an update, correct, of community schools update. So thank you. And next on our agenda is our budget discussion. So we have Ms. Burton here to do, to tell us about something that's going on with our budget. So Ms. Burton.
Thank you, Madam Chair and trustees. Really, tonight I'm here to give you a financial update. There's a lot of discussion about what is happening with state funding, what's happening with federal funding. And we thought it would be a good time to discuss these things with the board. Just to give you an idea of where I think our budget is going to end, at the, at the end of the year, due to the changes in state funding, what that impact will be. I'll be giving you a very preliminary projection of where I think we'll end the year. And again, I normally do not do a budget projection this early in the year. It is truly much closer to April or May. But I thought it would be important for you to see the impact of where these state funding revenues are going to have on us. I'm also going to provide a report of state and federal funds that we have. And then we'll talk about the S R one, which we previously referred to as CARES money and the new S R two funding that we'll be receiving. And I, on the board package tonight, there is a use, allowable usage of funds. So this was included in the board packet. What I have on the slideshow was not included, but we will be updating that with Keely. So it will be available on our doc. So it can be seen by the public. But tonight Caleb is going to work, help me work my magic. The first item to look at is where I think our foundation, it's our foundation program calculation. And this really is what we receive and we project what our state funding will, how it will end up. I believe this is a worst-case scenario. Because if you'll recall, last year, the governor withheld 5% of the allocation that was the appropriation that was given to us by JFAK at the end of the legislative session. And there's been a lot of, a lot of conversations that have happened since that 5% withholding and then coming back into this legislative session and what, what could be done, what couldn't be done. And with, there are certain items in statute, the career ladder funding for salary-based proportionment for teachers is something that is in statute. So that was reinstated by the governor, but the issue was there needed to be a zero impact on the revenue. It wanted to be a net zero. So what was given to us by the career ladder increased funding and leadership premiums, which are both in state statute, along with the 2% increase for classified administrative salaries. Those were stepped, those were driven in statute. So in order to make it a net zero impact is our discretionary funding is being decreased. And so when you look on the slide and you have the, you have a copy of, of the PowerPoint, you can see that we have the original budget that the board approved based on what our original projections were. And then I have provided a projection where I think our actual revenues will come in for state funding. And I don't, I won't go through line by line unless you, unless you want to after we go through this. You can see there, our discretionary funding is being decreased by one point, $7 million. And we received X amount of dollars per support unit and that is, that is the biggest impact for our district is that discretionary funding decrease. And what comes out are entitlements. It's listed as entitlement because that's what's on the state reporting. But we all refer to it as discretionary funding, but really what we pay with our discretionary funding is our health insurance for our staff, our utilities. Those are the items that we use for our, for that funding stream. And you can see that is a big impact. Salary-based proportionment is what we're projecting for the increase in the career ladder, the increase with the advanced run on the career ladder. You can see the variances between the different, the different line items. We are projected to receive $461,000 more than I had originally projected in transportation. And I believe that is a direct result of the payment that we made last fall. So that, that's a huge impact and an offset to our overall funding. But of course, that money is spent on transportation and it, and it still does not cover what we project our transportation cost to be. So that is our total support based on the foundation payment. The next line from 18 down, the items that are listed under another, under number 18, which we consider other state support, which is your leadership premiums, your bond levy equalization monies, your English language funding, IT staffing, professional development, all of those items typically are all restricted line items. Right? So the items that are, the lines that are highlighted in BREE, those, that money does not go into the general fund. That money stays in a, in a different fund. So the state technology money, your save and drug-free money or school billing maintenance. Now, those aren't even part of the general fund. These other, this other funding is part of our general fund, but really it's restricted. We have to report to the state how we spend it. If you don't use it, you lose it the next year. So there's adjustments to be made. So the real, the real takeaway from this report is that we will be losing a million dollars in state revenue that's available to spend on salaries and utilities and health insurance and coaching stipends and you name it. So that, to me, that's a huge takeaway. And if there's no questions on that, and so go to the next page. And this truly is, like I said, it is a preliminary estimate of where I think we will be, based on what we know today. And this is where you can see the impact of that reduction in the state funding. You can see that in the third column that says our proof, this is what the board approved back in June for our approved budget. You can see line item by line item, but you'll see that our revenues are, were, they will be down over $800,000. I'm projecting the 800,000 because there'll still be some adjustments coming in from, because this is where you see those additional items like leadership premiums. So that other state support, that was an increase, right? But that, but leadership premiums must be paid out to teachers. So the net effect of our revenues is around $800,000. And then again, looking at our salaries benefits, where I'm anticipating that we will end the year. And it's so, it's so soon to start doing these projections. But it's a best guess today of where I think we'll end. And because our expenditures are down this year, you can see that I had budgeted $23,300,000 in salaries, but so far, but what I'm projecting currently is 22.5 million. And the reason that we are lower, the reason that my projection is lower is because we've not been able to hire the staff that we need due to our reduced students and just the market. We have a lot of open positions across the board and we've just not been able to hire people. So that's part of the reason that our salaries are down from what we had originally projected. Mostly classified stuff. And it is mostly classified staff. We have filled all of the certified staff that we had anticipated hiring in all of our different funding streams. So the good news is, I had projected that we would reduce our fund balance by 1.6 million. Now it's better. It's still a reduction of $800,000. But, so that's where, that's where my preliminary projections are based on what I know today. Based on all this information, where our projected expenditures are and where we are with the state revenues. Are there any questions? I know it's fast and we can certainly, you know, I can talk online. I think Dr. French told me I had 10 minutes, so I didn't try to. I'm kidding. Whatever questions you have, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
So are we, as far as staffing levels, like there's a number of classified staff that we can't, we haven't been able to hire. How, how will that affect how our schools run? Like for the rest of this year and into next year?
It's a great question. Where I think that we've not been able to hire is the instructional aides. And especially in the special education realm. And we still have openings there. And because we've not had all of our students back in the classroom at one time, we, we haven't needed to hire what we would typically hire as far as overflow aides. Because based on the master agreement, it's the class sizes are a certain level. We provide additional support to the classrooms. But because our numbers were so much lower, obviously our enrollment numbers were lower and because we were doing split days at every level, and we haven't needed to hire those additional staff. So some is just a matter of not having the need that we had projected for one. The other thing is not being able to hire people. Another area that has impacted us is our sub-costs to date. And a normal year, our sub-costs, and again, remember, this was last June when we thought we were going to open in BREE and everything's done and the lawn is going to be great. Right? So that was what the budget was based on. What does a typical year look like with our absences and students attending school? So our sub-costs have been down up to now, but I am anticipating that once we go back with the elementary full-time, the full classes, I, I think we will probably have maybe more absences than we have. I'm not sure. It's, this, again, this is a best guess and that's what it is right now. We'll have a better idea after we get back into school for March or April. I'll be able to give you an update in, or remain to see where we are. But that, that's the area where the, where our numbers are down for cost. And if, Joni, if you can think of anything, or Dr. French, or Patty, that I'm missing, please jump in. The only I would have is, it's very educated guess. Based on trends, based on where we've got, based on. It's very educated. If anything, April knows how to project. And decimals and commas sometimes throw off, but such a good pen. No, but it's true. So I mean, I feel putting this out there, but again, it'll constantly be updated and to see where we're at.
And the one thing, Trustee, Vice Chairman and Trustee Madam Chair, I think that has been very good for us is that we have not, we have not had to, we, we've kept our food service, our child nutrition staff has stayed on. So we have not had a big turnover there because they've stayed on to help. That may, may or may not create an issue as we go forward, but we're, that's where some school districts are struggling a bit, is getting some of these people back that they may have laid off. And we do contract services with the transportation. So that is, we're not looking for rush drivers. It's the, I would say, special education support staff is our bigger, that will be our barrier as we move back.
And what this, right, this is the general fund. This is, this is where we have the most flexibility. So that's what's, that's what I'm talking about today. This is what's impacting our general fund. And well, you know, we're hoping that once we can hire people, once we have a schedule that always says it's a typical year, people, a lot of people have not been willing to take a job when there was some flexibility. You know, I think because of maybe being remote, services not needed. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that have gone into play this year for people wanting to work for school districts, period. I think, I think that's in, around the state. I think if you read all of the Idaho Ed News articles, every district is looking for people in some capacity or the other. So we're not alone in this, but I think maybe we'll start to see some change when we come back from spring break. I don't know. And hopefully we can go into next fall in more of a normal schedule. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to start gearing up with our staffing over the summer, over the spring. So anticipating this year.
I wonder, Madam Chair, to see one more item of interest. So we've already opened up for registration. We had our first new student registration kindergarten roundup option or whatever opportunity last Wednesday. And Caleb, visiting with Caleb today, we're also starting our returning student registration. That window is open. It's online. But we have, Keely has accepted phone calls from individuals and just encouraged them to either go online and register or even contact their, their school. So we're, we're starting to, that's what, we're starting early so that we can generate a better idea, a better picture going into the fall.
Of our student enrollment, what we anticipate. Something that we are really pushing to get parents.
You may have received a postcard encouraging you to register your kindergarten warrant. Tell your neighbor, because there are kindergarten students that we did not. We didn't see this year. And so we sure want to make sure they are, that we get them into our school and get them ready for next fall.
The next slide, and the next page in your handout really is just a recap of where we are with all of our different state and federal programs. And I know we don't spend a lot of time, we haven't in the past, spent a lot of time and we'll change that. I will implement new reporting in place for you in your board packets and you can see what's going on with our state and federal funds. And this, and I really, I created this for us to know, for the district leadership to see where we are with our different funding sources. Several of these are state funds, like we have special projects, which is where we put monies from local grants. We received a music grant for $35,000 that went there. It'll be dispersed in the schools. Of course, drivers' education is self-explanatory. The career technical and is there, that's those CTE funds come in based on the students that are taking the classes. We have another state program, Safe and Drug Free programs. The big, so let me go back. State technology is one of the funds that took a big hit this year. It was reduced pretty significantly in our budget and there's, it is not anticipated to be, to come back next year. They're telling us that it should by FY '23, we should see those funds reinstated, but we'll see when we get there. And I, and probably because there were additional funds that were provided through CARES or S R monies that could be spent on technology. There was a technology grant that we received with $331,000. So that helped us with responding to COVID to buy devices for our students. But again, just sort of listing of all of our different federal programs, we have a lot of carryover this year that we normally would not have. So it was really important to see what our allocation is currently and how much money we were able to carry over into the school year. And the reason we are allowed to do that is because of, you know, school going completely remote in March. We didn't have time to spend the funds, which we normally would do, and the state allowed us to carry over in excess of what in excess of what would be traditionally allowed. And that's why we wanted to show you what, what can we carry over going into next year. And not every, some, there's limits on almost all of the federal funds as far as how much you're allowed to carry over. And that's what those dollars are out there. There's a spending deadline. And I think that is really important for us to see when we have to have these funds spent and what our plans are. Again, everything at the very top of this section is standard. Those are standard federal funds that we receive every year. And the question came up earlier about Portentia. And we would be using Title IV funds to, because a community school liaison, community school expenditures are an allowed expenditure out of Title IV. Because each of these programs in here really have restrictions on how we can spend the money. Again, we can't just spend it on anything. Title I, it's, I'll let Jody, she can give that a better, she can tell you exactly what those can be spent on.
Title I is the basic services, math and reading. Comes to us on a formula grant based on our census of property. We get a per-people amount. And then we allocate out a majority of it to the schools. And that covers staffing as well as professional development and supplies, as well as what we do at the district level for PEE. But it's geared directly toward those that are at risk in the areas of math and reading. This district is unique, the first district I've worked at, that they fund every school K-12. Usually it's a K-3, if not a K-5, or 400. And I think as you look across the state, we are unique in the fact that we fund the K-12 system. The carryover is large, I'm sorry, Mr. Manning. The carryover is large only because of the work that we do in April, May, and June of last year. We had the right for the state to ask forgiveness on that, which they granted. We were able also to, because of the cuts in technology this past year, Title I was able to pick up a majority of what those softwares were. Like our testing, we picked up school data. We picked up. Things that Caleb usually picks up. We were able to pick it up. Well, I just drew a blank. Yeah, so Title is, that will get spent. And it will get spent within this year. It's my philosophy that it's generated based on this year's kids. So it gets spent in this year on our kids. And what we do is we have every school put together a proposal of needs. And then they write SMARTboards to those needs. And that's what the allowable budget goes to.
And the federal fiscal year is from October 1st through September 30th. So that's why some of these have different spending deadlines for these funds. So that's just a general, just for your knowledge, state funds are June 30th. We'll bore you with all the details. But we'll go down to the ESTR 1, the CARES money. You can see what we received in ESTR 1 funds. And we were on track to have this spent. Most of it spent by, during this year. But what happened is in. Did we get governors, the COVID monies? We received additional funds. We received $1.9 million from the governor that had a spending deadline in December. So expenditures that we had allocated to the CARES or ESTR 1, CARES Act, we moved those over to the governor's COVID monies. So it's been moving, you know, moving expenditures are all allowable expenditures. They all have to be in response to COVID. That is really the big issue with the ESTR 1, CARES money, coronavirus, blended learning, ESTR 2, and the governor's money. So those all have to be in response to, related to COVID. So we had moved, we moved some expenditures around. And primarily because of the expiration date. Absolutely. Because that had to be spent by December 30th. But then, of course, after the beginning of the year, they extended it, but we really already spent all that money. And you'll see, that's the last line I don't want to paint. So we, and there's no limit for carryover for these ESTR funds, but they all have to be spent by that spending deadline. And so you can see, we still have funds available for our learning management system that we'll be spending here. Well, the money's been spent, we'll be drawing down money. Because these are on a reimbursement, right? The state funding, we are just given the checks. We're given advances in August, November, and then February and May and July. Those are our state funding. And we are just giving those funds. But with, with the majority of these, all the federal programs, including the ESTR and the coronavirus, those are reimbursements. You have to spend the money to get the money. So it's, it's an interesting dynamic. And if something isn't allowed, it'll be denied. And so we have to be very careful to make sure that we are following the guidelines of the use of funds. Because I, because we don't have the money in our general fund to absorb these expenditures if they're not allowed in, in these funds. So it's really important that we are cognizant of what we're doing. We have a good plan of how we want to spend those funds.
We've got a great system in place too for checks and balances. But not one person can write PO and approve one of those.
We have a very, almost, I mean, Jody and I are involved in thinking every federal program funding string. Dr. French is involved in some of these other funds. So it starts at the school level in a lot of cases. And then it goes through the approval process from the principal to Dr. French, to Jody, myself. So we're all looking at all of those expenditures in some areas with, with the ESTR 1 and 2. Jody and I are very much involved in how we're spending this. And as a district leadership, we decide how we're going to spend those funds. So not only how we're going to spend them, but who's approving those expenditures.
Kind of question about technology. So as you, as you look towards this coming school year, how do you, how does the district see the one-to-one device ratio? Are kids going to hang on to devices? Are seniors going to take devices with them? Are we going to need, we have money for new devices, that kind of thing? Are we going to stay a one-to-one district? You guys have any thoughts on that?
Who wants to take this? Well, if Chair Piscina, Trustee Manning. I'd be happy to. So I'm happy to guess. Madam Chair and Vice Chairman Manning and Trustee. So we've been meeting with Caleb. And our anticipation is that we, we have a very good thing going. But we also have to talk about how that is, those devices do wear out. They do have to be changed and they have to be updated. But our anticipation is that we will continue to be a one-to-one. We see technology is, it is. Our teachers have done a fantastic job and the work that they've done and what students are able to do with the computers today, what they're able to create, you know, the problem solving, the collaboration. We don't want to lose that momentum. Now, we have not talked about seniors taking them. And I'm, I'm thinking, I don't know exactly what that, what you're applying as they graduate. Here's your.
I couldn't remember what the district was going to do with seniors. And one-to-one devices, if they were, I couldn't remember if we had promised them two seniors or if they were going to stay with the devices.
No, thank you. Vice Chairman Manning, we have not. So we anticipate that we've checked them out and that will be returned to us or inventory. Caleb is already, they have plans for an inventory, how that's going to look. And then we plan to reissue them next fall to students. Now, there may be students who'll meet them over the summer that will check them out. And we plan that they, you know, that it will be just like a library, book or resource, that that's something that they use. And that we, I don't see us moving away from an e-learning opportunity. Even, even when we are back in school full-time, I see teachers using this as collaborative opportunities for students. Go ahead, Jody.
I think to trustees, the Dr. Farrell, we have, she is our digital integration specialist that has been doing amazing things this year. And usually, the difficulty with introducing a piece of technology is making sure it's not a substitute for a textbook or a substitute for a worksheet, that you're actually integrating that technology into the learning process. And Dr. Farrell's done an amazing job working with teachers and continues to work with teachers and students to make sure that it's becoming part of the integration, not just the substitute. So I don't see that going.
I hope that answers that question.
I have a question. Just because, you know, it's the one, I am the sends out the negative one for Medicaid. Yes. So. Currently, again, this is current, this is current as of January 31st of how much we had received in Medicaid funds. But I anticipate that based on our current billing progress that we're making, that we will cover, that it won't be a negative.
Okay. And if it is, I'll be talking to you about that later. Because if we recall, we had to make some adjustments last year because we were no longer billing, but we still have been able to bill to provide services. And so I feel very confident that it will, that it will be positive. But I'll keep you.
We are on track.
Oh, that's China. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Isn't that kind of like a zero front balance? I mean, we want it to be a zero out.
Absolutely. And China and I have a lot of conversations about it, making sure that we're on track. She has worked very closely with her providers to ensure that they're billing timely. Because there's nothing worse than being in May and seeing that you have a negative balance of a half a million dollars. And it's because they haven't billed. That's not been the case with China. So let me just say that. In a previous district life that I've been involved in, that has been a concern. So we're, we're really on track. So China's done a great job in working with her service providers for billings. But it is, it's a zero. We want, we just want to cover our costs with the billing. Okay. And so, you know, we started out this little meeting or this, this part of the agenda that, you know, discretionary funding was going to be $1.7 million less. Right? So my question, you know, and unless I missed something in the, in the explanation, but you know, are you sleeping okay at night? Are we okay?
My doctor bills. No, just kidding. No, I'm not sleeping well. I will tell you, I'm not. Because it's very concerning, right? Actually, this was a great exercise to really put this down to paper. And again, I truly hope this is the worst-case scenario. Because when you look at that entitlement or discretionary funding, right? There's been a lot of numbers that have been discussed between the 27,556 that was originally allocated to the 21,730. I'm hoping that there's going to be an increase there. So that's why this is, I'm hoping this is a worst-case scenario. Yeah, that is per unit. So the units is the 283.69. So, and again, don't want to get too much into the weeds, you know, but that's still protected. But so as we know, going through the, well, March 12th, and we understand that that's when JFAK will be setting the education budget. So we have a few more weeks to know what, what we might be receiving, what we should be receiving. So we'll be able to update this after that March. Okay.
Pardon me, Madam Chair and Trustee. So April referred to this, this is in board docs. This is the guidance that we have been given, that how we can use those ESTR funds. So you're hearing legislators talk about how you can use these ESTR funds to backfill what the state's cut. We don't believe that is necessarily true. Federal programs, there are, on here, you'll see that there are 15 ways you can use those funds. But there's still controversy over what your legislators say can, they can be used for and what federal programs are saying. That's, they, this ESTR money that you're, we have quite a bit coming to our district. It's very limited on the use. I mean, it has to fit. And it has to be COVID-related.
To preventing, preparing for, and responding to COVID-19. It's very specific in the language of how to spend, how we can spend these funds. So there are certain restrictions. Actually, even though it says there's a lot of uses, but it has to be tied to a COVID.
I have a whole political idea on it, but I don't want to, I think I'll try to say that in my own mind. And to share with you, you know, we do want to meet with you to talk about how to use those ESTR funds most effectively to benefit the children of COVID. Knowing that there are dates that, you know, by the time it needs to be spent. We've talked about summer break academies. We've talked about maybe some support staff that, you know, that can help through this first few years of helping kids get back on track. But really, there's, there's quite a few conversations that we need to have with you. And we've generated some thoughts of like, okay, well, there's this and does it fit? You know, what, does it fit in one of those 15? So we still have a big conversation to have.
Okay. And there's still conversations that we've heard about at the state level. And again, I don't know, I'm hoping by March 12th, we'll have a better idea. If there was going to be additional funds allocated by the governor, because states also were given additional funds. And we, there was a discussion, would that be a summer program? You know, so again, as you receive different funds and they have different deadlines and different purposes, we want to be very cognizant of that we're taking advantage of all the funds that we have available to us and stay within the purpose of the allocation of those funds. So sometimes it's just a little bit of a waiting game. But right now, I mean, with the COVID monies, we spot, we bought a lot of PPE. We bought some cleaning, additional cleaning equipment that we hadn't been able to afford. And so just to help us with the purposes of cleaning the schools. So.
Well, and devices. That's been our number one, the expenditure was devices for students and staff so that we could be in remote learning. But that's how we've spent these dollars.
I don't know if you remember, trustees, when we had our convention in November, our Zoom convention, I know that ISBA leadership talked about, you know, the hard conversations that we might have to have in the future due to the, the funding, the reduction of funding. And so, you know, we, this should really not come as a price that, you know, that we're here. But, you know, hopefully, conceivably, maybe we'll have some money.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Trustee. I think the one thing that we need to be cognizant of and when making decisions to fund long-term expenditures or short-term money, that is something that, right, this is one-time money. This will go away. You know, a wise person told me, do not put short-term, one-time money into staff and salaries that are ongoing. Now, we, that may, that we may come back and ask for different staff members, knowing that these are somewhat temporary positions. These are positions that we are anticipating that would go away once things get back to normal. But that is why we really look to that state funding to fund our consistent, ongoing salary schedules for our certified staff and our classified staff and our administrators. These are good for one time. You know, if you recall, you approved us giving our staff a payment, both the COVID payment in the, in November for all the additional work that they had done. And that was an allowable and a great use of the, of the governor's money. Because everyone had just been working so hard. And so that was, we're very thankful that you approved that and that we were able to pay the one-time stipend, if you will, to the staff. It was a one-time payment, nothing went in the salary schedule. And I think that's hard for everyone to hear is, you see that we have all this money, right? And people said, we'll give us raises. You should be able to give us a raise because you have all these additional funds. But unfortunately, this is not ongoing money. You know, unless the federal government comes out and says, okay, we're going to give you this for the next, you know, then, then we may think differently. But right now, we will stick to our plans of using these for one-time expenditures.
Because we can't give a raise, we can't give a raise and then take it away.
No.
The next one.
No, right.
I think that same person that gave you that advice, gave you advice and said, don't put a dead fish in the trunk of your car on a hot summer day.
I think they did. I think I've heard that before. Absolutely. And so I hope this was beneficial. I hope, you know, after you've had a chance to mull it over and you want to, you know, call me questions, I'll be happy to give more information if you need. If you have any more questions, trustees, any more questions, thoughts, comments?
I've got a question, I guess, with, with the, the last levy that we passed. Is that providing buffer for our budget or could that rule that?
So if you go back to the second slide. Sorry, this one, yep, that one. And you can see that if we did not have that supplemental levy of four million dollars up there. Line, so supplemental levy is the second line, this is available fund balance. And then underneath that is supplemental levy four point one million. So it's one, two, three, four, five, six. It's lined down. That is a buffer, trustee Manning. And we would not have we would have four million dollars and we would be in the hole.
So I guess we really thank our patrons as well for trusting the district. You know, they did, they did pass a, a large levy. You know, it is, it is helping us out here at these uncertain times.
Thank you, you're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. Because if we did not have that, we, we would be slashing a lot of concessions, right? Because, because that's it, we're, our fund balance I'm projecting is going to be three million dollars at the end of this school year. And without that four million, we wouldn't have one and we would be making a lot, we would have to make a lot of adjustments to staff. Because when eighty-five percent of your budget is a salary and benefits, that's the only place you can go. And so that would be, that would have an impact. And, and we do have some hard discussions going forward, right? Because of our numbers, and that, that's what we've talked about all along this year as our enrollment numbers have continued to decline. We're generating, even though on an enrollment-based funding model, our numbers are considerably less. And so that is going to be some conversations that, you know, I get to be the bearer of bad news, that's who I am. But those are the conversations we have to have because we're not going to have that state funding. And supplemental levy is a two-year levy. But this is our first year collecting the four point one, we have one more year. And then next year will be, the board will decide how we want to go to the patrons and what we want to request, right? Because that's, we have to start thinking about that to run our election. And if the August date is taken away, we really have November, November of twenty one.
Yeah.
We have March of twenty-two and May twenty-two. And as I told you, May twenty-two is almost too late to run an election just because of budget preparation. So that leaves us November and March to really think about next school year. So you're right, we're very grateful that our patrons did approve that this last year.
And I, I think April, she's pretty accurate, that the money from ASRA cannot subsidize what, really what our, our supplemental has helped us build. Right, because it is, again, soft money and it has to be used in a specific way. It is very challenging with it when it comes to staffing and the supplemental. Well, I hope that you feel more informed than you were.
Okay, trustees, you have no more comments? Their next agenda item, moving on, is the district continuing operation, school operation plan for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when we met last Monday, I said I, I could give you, try to give you a little update on what we're, you know, meetings and task force and who we've seen that, so we have met with the elementary principals. And in that elementary principal group are basically most of the members of April's group. Paul and Richard served on the school operation plan. And the other people, other individuals from school, served on the school operation were secondary, mostly secondary administrators. Bernie.
We had Bernie and Bonnie, thank you, Dr. French, for maintenance and child nutrition, Bonnie. And then we had three secondary administrators.
So we felt like school operations actually had their, they had a meeting when we had met with the elementary groups. So meeting with those principals and, and their meeting with their teams and gearing up for March twenty-nine. We meet with the CEA tomorrow afternoon, after school. And then on Wednesday morning, we have a meeting with our superintendent council, which are, those are our representative, our teacher representative from each of the schools. So that's where we're at at this point in timing in discussing the March twenty-nine for elementary. And I just, I added some things to board docs, the updates from Southwest District Health for your information.
We also have seven members of the instructional task force at that same meeting. So we were able to do two task force meetings and one with all the elementary principals as well as the specialists like China and Shami and Tamara.
Thank you. That's my update from last Monday.
Okay. Trustees, any questions that you would like to ask?
I will say we plan to have, like, the plan, the amendments, like we have done. Trying to get all that after we meet with these other groups, get that all squared away for the March date.
Okay, so now we have, our next item is future agenda items. Anything, trustees, that you'd like to see added to our agenda for the next meeting? And just know that, you know, if you do have any ideas or any, any items that you'd like to have added, you can always talk to Dr. French, right?
I did, I, Madam Chair, the question about the gun safe. And if, would you want that at a regular meeting? Did you, would you like that at a work session?
Because I don't know if we would want to move back to do it individually first and then, you know, when you do an action item later that, in a regular meeting.
So we could do it at the work session for March, if you wanted, or works. And then by the April meeting, that gives you time to mull it over. So that a thought, because that was on the last agenda as a future agenda item. But Keely and I were talking about, did we set a date?
We didn't set a date, she, she was gonna set a date.
We just said sometime in the next few months.
That's true.
We weren't sure, but it could be in March or we could wait. No, I mean, you know, April and May, work session in March and then.
I mean, with our, with our school, with our school safety plan coming up soon, I mean, maybe it would be part of that as well.
Sure, I'm, I'm trustee Godina. I did visit with Bernie, Bernie, April and I, Caleb were visiting today. And what we'd like to do, we're meeting with Elliot from the Idaho School, City School, City Schools. Just to review our plan. And so what we thought, if you're, is like, if the June work session is just to go over it, like, because Bernie, I mean, schools have plans, but Bernie, I mean, what we can do is put it into a one-stop shop for you. So he wanted to be, have a chance to meet with them. We've talked to Caleb about the communication system across the district, so.
If I, if I remember correctly, Vice Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we go over it, it will need to be an executive session due to the safety and the nature of having it be confidential for our school. And so it would have to be, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I can't remember honestly.
Yeah.
Why we'd wanna.
And I, I, I think, I believe I remember that from one of our trainings with ISBA.
Yeah, I remember that.
Session, so.
Are you, how do you feel about, like, if we go at the June, excuse me, the July work session, we're in the day, we can take part of that day.
Yes.
Make it an executive session. Are you okay with that, is that timeframe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's for everything, is that correct?
It would, yes, we would go over, we were talking about today, all the things that.
Yeah. Putting both those things together.
Okay, so maybe moving, moving the presentation.
Okay, so in July, how Officer Phillips come out or Lieutenant Holley?
Yeah.
Okay. July, or July retreat.
A retreat. Where we go, River Rocky.
Okay, so we'll move into, we won't find on that in March, but in July.
Okay.
That is, that's an item that is exempt. I've been advised that, that is an exempt item, exempt from public records, so we can review it then. Okay.
And that we'll have some updates, I know Caleb's been working now on just how we communicate across the district to be more effective.
Dr. French, Madam Chair, so would he be getting a hold of, of the SROs?
Yes. Yeah, either Keely or I will talk to Officer Phillips.
Yeah.
Or in an, or even, because both Officer Phillips and Lieutenant Holley, Holley have reached out to me. So I'm happy to reach back out to them and or.
Okay, okay, great. I appreciate that.
Okay, good. Okay.
Madam Chair, I've got one thing.
Yes.
Do we know, we're gonna change the superintendent evaluation process? Do we know where we're gonna be to discuss that next?
Yes. Keely? Can we get with Chrissy Lamont, our ISBA trainer, so that we can get started on our, the new process that we're gonna do for the superintendent evaluation? The new process that we're gonna start and when she would be available, so that we can have training on that new process? Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so if we can start as soon as possible, that will give us.
The work session.
Yeah, maybe March, if we can.
And Madam Chair and Trustee, so our next work session, we are at Surinjada to take a tour. She, or Principal Swan is preparing for us to see all the great stuff. And I, then if we're able to look at their newsletter that you sent out, it's pretty, pretty happening newsletter.
Lots of video.
So. You know what, it's, did it, does it need to be later so that you are able to be on the tour?
Five thirty would work for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think we could probably do a tour with this shade or so, Principal Swanson tour in thirty minutes. And then we could still give them time in the meeting to do some student recognition. Okay, would that work?
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, you can do it at five and I'll just catch up.
It would be nice to have you included in that.
Yeah. It's just hard to get out there.
Yeah. Thank you. Dr. Godina. All right, and so now we have, I'd like to ask, for, we're going into executive session. So let's see, we need to ask, I need to ask for a motion to enter into executive session, please.
Okay, I'd like to take action to go into the executive session.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion. Okay, we have a second. So do we, let's see, do a roll call and then go and then find out who's gonna enter. Okay, so of course, you could do the roll call for the executive session.
Trustee Claudia Swastibi.
Yes.
Trustee Andrew Butler.
Yes.
Trustee Manuel Godina.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Travis Manning.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Madam Chair Piscina.
Yes. Okay, and then, let's see. Vice Chair Manning, could you read the, the reason for our going into executive session?
Right of code seventy-four, two oh six one, to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent, or public school student.
Okay, thank you. So Caleb, can you put us in executive session, please?
Just giving a heads up with this topic.
Jamie, we're recording. We're live.
And we are.
Okay, so welcome back. I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn from our executive session.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn executive session, second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second. And to do a roll call.
Trustee Claudia Swastibi.
Yes.
Trustee Andrew Butler.
Yes.
Trustee Manuel Godina.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Travis Manning.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair Piscina.
Yes. Okay, and then Vice Chair Manning, if you could give us what, read our, our decision. We talked about.
Information only.
Okay. It was information only. Oh, could you read the whole? Can I ask you to read? I'd just like to, you read very well, I'd like to listen.
As right of code seventy-four, two oh six one B, to consider the evaluation dismissal of disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent, or public school students. Information only.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, I'll hold in second, always a pleasant say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.